The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the secretary please note that all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioners Burgoyne and Mu. The first item for our agenda tonight is the reorganization of the Board. The four Board members who, in this case, were re-elected technically took office on March 15th by Charter, but it's appropriate that the four re-elected Board members be sworn in and sign affidavits, after which the Board will elect its new Chair and new Clerk. So if the four re-elected Board members would please stand back here, our secretary is going to square up soon.
Do you, Michael Dick, Deborah Morrow, Johns Moran, and John Sandmore solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the office of School Commissioner of the City of Rutland to the best of your judgment and abilities? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Now that the Board is officially back to full strength, our first item is the election of the Board Clerk for the 96-97 year, and I would entertain motions for nominations for Board Clerk.
I nominate Deborah Morrow, second.
Any other nominations, please?
Move nominations, close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor of the nomination of Deborah Morrow as Clerk? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Your honor.
The Clerk would accept nomination for position of Chair.
I nominate Michael Dick, second.
Any other nominations?
Close nomination.
All those in favor of Michael Dick as Chair of the Board?
Aye.
Opposed? Did I get to do this?
Thank you very much. And I do take it as an honor, at least on my behalf. It's a pleasure to serve with this Board. It's a strong Board, it's a good Board, and all I have to do is know when to say, "All in favor, all opposed." It's a great Board to work with, and I'll enjoy another year acting as your Chair. First item of business is the approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting of the School Board dated March 12th, 1996. A motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of March 12th? If not, all in favor of the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. There are no written communications to the Board that I am aware of. Are there any citizens in the audience who wish to address the Board regarding any issues this evening? If not, we'll move on to the personnel item, and the Chair would entertain a motion that the non-licensed section of the Personnel Memorandum Number 128 dated March 22nd, 1996, be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
So move.
Second.
I would ask the Superintendent to address the memorandum.
Thank you, Dr. Dick. There are two recommendations tonight. One is for the -- they're both in the non-licensed tech area. First is the appointment of a long-term substitute for Kristi Froderick, fulfilling for the Superintendent's Secretary. Second is an increase in hours for Medicaid clerk, Evelyn Stowers, from three hours to six hours a day. This individual is actually really paying off in terms of the work she's doing for us to access some new funds. So those are the two recommendations this evening.
Questions or comments regarding the Personnel Memorandum? If there are none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For those opposed? Thank you. Instructional development? Dr. Brothers?
Thank you again. Tonight I want to address the topic of the overall budget figure again with the Board and its current status, the action in the Legislature. Just want to update everyone so that we keep everyone actually in tune with what's happening and how it affects our projected budget for next year. So I will need to use the overhead to put a few overheads up on the screen. I think I'll start off with where I was two weeks ago, just as a brief review and bring everyone up to date, especially the School Commissioners and the public. Let me say that -- let me first speak about where we were two weeks ago. This was a summary that I put up there two weeks ago. We had worked hard to get our overall budget down to $18.1 million for next year. What I explained to the Commissioners and the public was then deducted from this everything that's not local income. In other words, state aid, federal aid, vocational aid, tuition aid, it comes to about $9.1 million right now. This leaves about $9 million to fund from local sources. We turn to our present tax structure, the existing taxes we're collecting, with a suggested moderate increase of $228,000, which gave us total revenue sources of about $8.6 million. The difference between here and here is the gap in $396,000. As of two weeks ago, that's where I left this, and so this was the figure that we had to work on to balance the budget for next year. Now, let me move from there to some information for more up to date for today. Certainly I'm going to try not to confuse anybody. Very important to this process is the discussions taking place in the Legislature up in Montpelier. As of right now, the House has adopted a budget bill for next year, which includes in state aid to education, a pretty significant loss for education around the state. They took an additional $2.4 million off their figure. For here at Rutland City, it translates into a state aid loss of $281,000 that we have to cope with. In our original budget discussions, we were looking at a higher figure, a figure that was $281,000 higher, which in itself was what was a conservative estimate of where we should be for next year. This is a surprise figure, but nevertheless, it's the one we have to deal with right now. I mentioned this, this budget gap two weeks ago, about $396,000. I just showed you another of the overhead. In the past two weeks, Bob Bingham and I and some of the principals, we've worked hard at trying to make some adjustments on our Medicaid funding piece. We've worked hard at straightening out some finances with RACs in terms of our school-based commissions, but we've been able to take this figure down and get it down to about $350,000, and that's about where we are. That's about where we are stuck in terms of the current for next year budget. I think it's also important to note, excuse me, that everybody I talk to about this problem right here, everybody I talk to that belongs to the Legislature up there or is in the State Department up there feels that this thing, in fact, is going to change. The fact that the Senate will take some other action, and that when it ends up in a conference committee, the final budget will allow a higher state aid number to school districts around the state. We won't know that, actually, until probably sometime in early May, maybe late April at the earliest. So as I had kept saying to everyone here the past two weeks, we have to, of course, prepare for the worst-case scenario, which is this one. Yet feel fairly comfortable that it will probably go away, and in a month we'll know what the real state aid figure is, and maybe we will regret having taken some actions if we decide to take them in another two weeks. So let me move from there to another overhead. I mentioned the -- about another two weeks, because if I was going to make some recommendations to really trim the budget down and to attack that gap of $350,000, the only place to do it is with personnel cuts. That's the only thing that's really left. However, we could take some other extreme steps, though, and possibly avoid some personnel cuts.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
On that overhead you had there before, maybe I missed something. You had -- we had a gap of 396.
Right.
Did that include the loss of state aid, the anticipated loss of state aid?
Yes. So in other words, in that 390 or so, John, about 280 of that is that loss of state aid loss.
Thank you.
If I was going to prepare the school district for next year to meet that budget deficit, I'd have to come in in two weeks and talk about some teacher cuts, probably in this number, totaling about that amount of money. These cuts we could postpone until a couple of months, and probably we would know, we'd have much better information in a month or two and know whether or not we had to deal with this one or not. But this one we'd have to deal with in two weeks. I'd rather not do that, because I'm almost perfectly sure that that state aid figure's going to go back up again, and we won't have to do things like this. I would suggest another strategy for the School Commissioners. By the way, before I leave that, let me just talk about another factor. Absent up here in this strain is the idea that we could possibly make an administrative cut somewhere to help reach this goal. It's my considered opinion that we just are cut too thin already with the administrative staff in the school district, and I would not make such a recommendation in any regard to help solve this problem in that way. Regret having to say that, but I did that four or five years ago with some administrative cuts, and I think we've scaled ourselves back to about the minimum we can have to operate. In fact, I operated for four years in the school district without helping this building, and it does take its toll after a while. So let me leave that one and suggest to you what I am calling. Suppose the Legislature -- suppose the Senate doesn't make a change in the House budget, the House bill, and suppose they accept it, and we do have the worst-case scenario in two months and how to deal with, which we don't think is going to happen. But if it does, if the Senate doesn't react and do something different, then we're faced with a problem. If that happens, I'm saying that we could go into some austere emergency backup strategy. We could tap into some additional extra local tax money, and I'm suggesting maybe to tune it that much money. We can cut supplies by $100,000, and remember, we've already cut them back to this year's level in the current budget we're talking about. We could take two positions which currently we have open in terms of a leave of absence and a resignation and not fill them, although I think that would be disastrous for us, but we could do that if you want to look at this in terms of emergency. And we could find some other personnel cuts, some non-professional staff that aren't fixed to the 4/15 date later on in June to help, or rather, May, to help find this much money. And we could find $350,000 in an emergency situation to meet that absolute, very worst-case scenario if the Legislature didn't do something different.
When you're talking about other personnel, how many positions?
Probably six to seven.
Yes? The additional local tax.
Well, that comes from the room still left in our charter limit. We're filling up a little higher without touching it, still leaving a little room left over for next year. Remember what I said now? This is the emergency backup strategy in case the Legislature doesn't go back and enact that other piece of state aid to education. But most people, most pundits looking at the scene up there say it's probably going to happen. I'd rather fall back on this strategy and rely upon this as a backup and not come in here in two weeks and talk about any teacher cuts with me. And I guess what I'm simply asking for is maybe some correction of guidance from you folks. John?
Those two positions you got there, who are the -- what are the two positions that you're talking about then? You got a long-term sub and there's a resignation.
There's a special educator that design. We feel right now we're a long-term sub, and we have a new teacher who will not be absent next year. And I don't know what we do, if there is a put in that schedule together, providing service to the middle school kids, but it's there. It's an emergency.
And maybe Bob can tell me, how much ballpark figure, how much do the raises or the step increases that the teachers get, how much does that add to the budget every year? If you got a ball -- excuse me, a ballpark figure.
Over $50,000, I reckon.
Because basically, what's going to happen after we come to the end of our fifth year, where we told everybody we were going to use this increase, is our perception that we're going to go back and ask for more money, because if that's not our perception, then we're going to be up against our limit, and we're going to have to start cutting anyway.
Have we gotten any word from the City Assessors' Office regarding the grant list for next year?
Not officially. The word we get is extremely, extremely conservative growth, which is all we plugged into our schedule for our budget projections for next year.
So we did?
Yeah.
And how about our projected unextended balance as of March 27th?
Well, last week, two weeks ago, I told you that we were adding a little bit more to that balance to help us with this problem for next year. But I think, Bob, we're probably up to around $70,000, $75,000.
We're using for budget purposes $50,000.
$50,000.
You've already assumed a $50,000 unextended balance. Do you have any sense that that number may be higher?
No.
I mean, I know what's in the package today.
We have a lot on our expenditure for the next year, hoping that we could get that a little bigger.
There's a number in here that's now close to 90-something?
Right, because there are other items in here that I'll probably talk to you about in the community update that could affect that. So right now, $50,000 is our certain estimate. Hopefully you could go up to $75,000.
So my sense is you have a backup plan, and your recommendation as a worst-case scenario is to fall back on the backup strategy as opposed to cutting positions in anticipation of some drastic action by the Legislature?
Yes, that's my preferred strategy for now.
Where exactly would this take us in terms of the charter limit?
It's hard to say if you run all the numbers through the computer, because everything affects everything, but I would say maybe around 124. And remember, that's -- remember what I'm saying, though? That's a worst-case problem if the Legislature doesn't come back around and come to that higher figure again. And let me also say to you that that higher figure I'm talking about represents a state aid to education figure, which has already gone through a cut since state government for next year. And we're talking about a $2.5 million cut even beyond where they were. They were originally about $4 million less than where we picked last year, and we're looking at more of a cut. So I just, you know, just my gut tells me that that thing is not going to happen. And this is the plan I would suggest that if we had to, we could fall back. Fall back. Madeline?
I feel a little uncomfortable with this. I certainly don't believe that we should cut any staff at all, be it administration or teachers, but I believe that if we are going to have to look at a picture in April, that we need to have every option available to us. And while I recognize your position on administration, I believe in just -- we currently have ten administrators, and three years ago, we had eight. We had five elementary school principals, one middle school principal, two high school principals, and one in Longfellow. Now we have four elementary school principals, one middle school principal, three high school principals, and two administrators in Longfellow. So I, if you're going to be looking at cuts, would like to have that option if in an absolutely worst-case scenario, we reduce one administrative position. And if we're going to do that according to contract, I believe we have to give notice this evening, and if we don't give notice this evening, then we totally lose that option. And I just don't see how that gives us an opportunity to look at the whole system. I agree with you that I believe my gut tells me the Legislature can't possibly do this to communities all over the state. It's not just Rutland. But you never know what they're going to do, and I don't like the idea that we are closing off an avenue, even though I regret that we might have to do that. And so I think if we had eight and we now have ten, and in a worst-case scenario, you needed to somehow cut back to nine, because in addition to that, we had two guidance personnel at the high school, and now we have four. So we do have some leeway in there, and if you're going to be looking at cuts at some point, I would like to at least have another three weeks to make that decision and regret that the teachers and the administrative rift date is different, but...
First of all, Madeline, I disagree with the numbers you just offered about the administrative lineup. We're not too higher than we were last year or two or three years ago.
Well, I thought we had five elementary schools, one middle school, three high -- two of one. I thought we had a principal in every elementary school.
We had four elementary principals up until the time, God, three, four years ago. We did have five.
And I figured it is five. Five elementary, one middle, two high schools, and for four years, at least up until this year, one administrator at Longfellow. Right?
I'm not sure where all the numbers are tonight, but I disagree that we're too higher now than we were two or three years ago. Remember, the way in which we engineered bringing a person into this building was by cutting back on the high school position last year.
Don't we have three administrators in the high school?
We have three administrators. We had four. And if we were...
The athletic director wasn't a full-time position?
He was as full-time as the other people were. They were all teaching some at that point.
So the -- I thought we got the administrator into this building by reducing the teaching time.
We did.
Of the administrators in the high school, and then that gave us...
That helped with that problem up there.
Well, I'm just looking at it in terms of bodies. Right now, we have ten bodies, and certainly a few years ago, we had less than that. I don't want to cut any one of them. I think every one of them performs a valuable service, but I don't see how we can look at this and right now, close off an avenue.
Do you have a recommendation to the Board?
Well, I would like to -- if we have to give a rift notice to administration by March 30th, then I would think we would have to make a reduction of an administrator somewhere in the K-12. And that are -- in that union, and I believe their contract would be the least senior person would be ripped. Is that correct? No? Would you like to enlighten me then?
Well, I would have to go look into that contract to figure it would probably be the least senior person, but that would depend upon his position and specific licensing at different grade levels. But furthermore, I didn't come here tonight, and I'm not prepared tonight to endorse or support any kind of recommendation like that whatsoever. Neither am I here tonight to support even this kind of recommendation tonight, and that's why I'm offering a Board alternative strategy. If the very, very worst-case thing happens up there in Montpelier, we could -- it would be awful austere. We could survive for next year.
Well, I personally would not have an objection if we had to raise the tax limit, as much as I know that it's not something we want to do.
That's correct.
And I could support this if I knew that the recommendation was not going to be to cut staff by April 15th, but if there are others on the Board who feel they absolutely don't want to raise taxes, and it's going to be necessary to cut some staff, I guess I feel that all staff want to be in the -- my preference would be to raise the tax, but...
So you're -- if I'm understanding, Madeline, you're saying you don't really want to -- you don't want the Board to rip any position, but you want to make sure that we don't pass on it tonight and be having a discussion in two weeks and be ripping?
Exactly. Well, also, I also hear you saying that in two weeks, potentially ripping an administrator would be impossible. Right.
That's right.
Now, do we need to identify the administrator tonight if we were in any way moving in the direction that Mrs. Sherman is looking at?
I believe you'd have to identify the position.
Do we have to identify the position in the motion, or is it we just make a motion that we include the principals in the rift, and then it's up to Dr. Brothers to decide who that person is and if that's on the list or not?
The Board must officially vote to enact a reduction in force of any position. Not a person, but if it's an art position or a high school principal, you can't just authorize the Superintendent to do that, I don't believe.
But could you authorize him according to contract? Could you say to rip the least senior administrative?
But that does not necessarily mean that we're going to be ripping the person that would be the least valuable within our scheme of operations. So by doing that, we could actually vote to rip a person that we can't be without and have someone on staff that is not qualified to fill any other position.
Well, I think they're all valuable, the least valuable. But I understand what you're saying, but if no one here has the contract... But, right, I understand what you're saying, but if no one here has the contract, is it something we could take up later in the evening when one had an opportunity to look at a contract?
Well, why don't you take up this issue first and decide what you want to do?
I would like you to tell me how the system will operate with a hundred-dollar budget applied. And what would not happen?
We're going to have to operate in a very austere manner. It's going to be less paper purchased, a few less books purchased, a little less music purchased. It's going to be about one-third less the amount that we'd have in the budget overall for next year, about three-hundred-seventeen thousand, a hundred thousand dollars down. But we'd still have people, the most important part of the whole system is the people or professionals that are delivering instruction to kids in their classroom, not the paper and the books and pencils, although that's important too. I would suggest to you that, that the people, the people are more important than the paper and books and the pencils.
Madeline, just for some clarification, if the board must vote to any reduction in force by position, any switching around or bumping as such happens outside the board, and that's not the board's decision, but we must vote to reduce a position. We're taking it out of our budget, we're not going to fund it.
So if we reduce, if the motion was to reduce a principal?
Not a principal. You've got to identify, are you talking about secondary? Are you talking about the middle school? Talking about the intermediate? Are you talking about primary?
Or are you talking about assistant superintendent?
Well, it seems to me that...
You've got to identify the position that you reduce.
So if you, if one were to reduce a elementary principal, and that person were more senior and they were bumping around, that would be beyond board, somebody...
That's correct. Just like in the teachers' union, which you understand.
Now, we have, technically, we, we have in the budget money for an assistant superintendent.
That's correct.
So if everybody that we've got in place, we want to keep in place, and then if we need money to cut because we're uncomfortable cutting two positions, then we could cut the assistant superintendent because there's really no body sitting in there, and that could happen anytime prior to the, prior to the...
Prior to, yeah, your appointing somebody.
So I guess our question tonight, if we feel that we should put this on the table, is do we want to identify an administrator and cut the administrator, or do we just want to say that if we're not happy with this, we're not going to cut an administrator, we're just not going to have an assistant superintendent?
I don't think we need to say, unless you're, unless you feel that the system can operate with one less administrator.
Well, I feel more strongly in keeping two teaching positions that face the kids day-to-day than I do keeping an administrator.
And I certainly feel more strongly looking at an assistant superintendent position than I would a level administrator in a scenario that doesn't seem to need to play out anyway.
To keep, to keep the assistant superintendent?
No, I'm sorry, to sort of let that one go in light of the fact that we're in the process of identifying an individual, but that person isn't there. And certainly, in terms of the administration of these buildings, I think the system itself has proved itself not to suggest that the system is not necessary.
So re-clarify this for me. If we voted to eliminate the assistant superintendent position tonight and the state aid was restored, would we restore the position later?
Yes, we could do that.
We wouldn't have to vote, though, to, we wouldn't have to take a position on that at all.
That is correct.
Right, because there's no one under contract there. So in a worst-case scenario, if, if the board felt strongly that it wanted to keep its present administration and did not want to raise taxes if we didn't get the kind of help we needed from Montpelier, we could decide not to fill that position until the time we've appointed someone. Correct?
Very same way the superintendent is talking about two potentially unfilled positions as holding those out there. Those are options because there are not currently people in those positions. Cheryl?
Yeah, I'm feeling very uncomfortable about the kinds of recommendations that are out here. First of all, I think that we have operated with underfunding the supplies line item for the past several years. Seems as though that's the first line item that savings are generated from. Secondly, the positions that are being recommended for cut are ones that are currently not filled, so it becomes convenient to cut those positions as opposed to positions that perhaps we have identified that we can best meet the needs of kids without. And I guess in many respects, I'm feeling that we're again being very reactionary and we are not attempting to be proactive in this whole episode. And I would like, I would like to have the kinds of discussions such as how can we organize ourselves differently with fewer people and still meet the needs of kids without having to cut programs, without having to just cut those positions that are politically expedient and, and come at this with some educational rationale as opposed to the political lens of community. I give the floor.
I guess, Cheryl, would you please refresh me? Is, my memory is failing me. Would you please identify the positions that we can do without, if you previously identified these?
I don't think that I suggested that we had identified any possession, positions. What I had suggested is that I think that we should be having the kinds of discussions that might allow us to identify some of those kinds of positions.
Okay, I thought you said we had previously done, right?
For example, and I will give one example. Last year, or this current year, do we, we have two nurses on board?
We have two nurses that have a funding through the Medicaid program for the primary schools.
And how, and how many school nurse teachers will we have in the budget? How many do we have in the budget for next year?
We have three.
It would seem to me as if we have been meeting the needs of kids with two school nurse teachers for this year, why then would we be, we'd be looking at having three school nurse teachers for next year?
One thing you've forgotten, Cheryl, is that we told you folks that the two school nurse teachers we have this year are also teaching health classes for the first time in their careers. And the person that's coming back, well, to leave this year is going to also be teaching health classes next year, which is all going to be part of our longer-range plan to deal with the risk array results that was all involved. So, and we've taken that into consideration. We're also going to be driving some saving, probably some driver education time next year as we increase our nurses' and teaching help. And we've already factored the savings of about twelve thousand dollars into our budget by getting the driver teacher out of the, his ed classroom, doing more driving during the block hours he's paid by us during the regular school day. I think we're trying to do a good job, a comprehensive job, and a proactive job in managing the organization in a positive way. Just in, I brought along another transparency which I had talked a lot about during some of these discussions last year. One of the studies that we heard about last year was the cost-of-quality study, nineteen ninety-three data they used. That showed the statewide per teacher-student average in the state of the month was twelve point nine students. Rutland City data for that year of ninety-three, ninety-four showed us a fifteen students per person. If we were to bring ourselves down at that year and to be exactly on average in the state, not better than average, but just average, we would apply to hire twenty-eight more professional staff that year to be an average school district in the month. I think we're doing a pretty effective job in managing the system for your folks.
Is it desirous on the part of the majority of the board to consider further discussion of ripping of any administrative position? Or are we comfortable with the superintendent's recommendation as proceeding as it? I think if there is sentiment that we want to potentially rip an administrative position, let's encourage the conversation along this topic. If the majority is not willing to do that, then let's shift gears. But I would like to get a sense of the board.
I don't see how you can run an eighteen-million-dollar operation with four hundred employees with any less people than we have running it now. I simply don't see that.
I agree.
Then, but am I hearing that you would support the worst-case scenario then, which would in fact be running a system on potentially, well, two or whatever, less positions? True?
Possibly. You've got two more weeks.
We don't have to make that decision. I'm saying that I'm not in favor of, of administrative cuts.
Okay, well, that's...
That leaves assistant superintendent, and it's hard for them to work without a person hired.
Okay, so that doesn't necessarily discount, well, on your part, not necessarily, should check at any point, and you wouldn't see administrative cuts?
I don't have to make that decision tonight.
What's a sense of the rest of the word, Commissioner?
Well, I can support Dr. Brothers' proposal, but it's up there now.
Any other comment? Ted, any input?
I, I also support that.
Nancy? So if I read, there is at least a significant majority of the board that has no desire in further discussion of a potential ripping of a funded administrative position at this time. And if that discussion takes tonight, anything else on budget?
Well, we want to go ahead and talk about the middle school budget and staffing and supplies tonight. That's also, that's another major part of the presentation tonight. Cindy?
Come up, please.
We already told you we weren't cutting.
On a positive note, I'd like, I have something I'd like to share with you.
Take this time for that, please.
I have presented, okay, Dr. Brothers with a proposal, and this is a schematic of that proposal, of a new mosaic inlaid tile sign for Rutland Middle School. All of the materials were donated to the school by Richard English, a parent of one of our students. The sign was designed by Christine Brown and George Mokel. It's, the idea is we'd have it fifteen feet in length and three feet in height, and it would be created by students and parents of middle schools of, that attend the middle school. Dr. Brothers is currently considering that. It would be backgrounded in wood, which is donated by the Unified Arts Department, and would be mounted by our own custodial folks. So in terms of cost to the district, there would be none at all, and it'd be solely a community, community process. So I will start it with Mrs. Sherman and allow you to have a look at this. It's kind of a nice idea, and it kind of brightens things up coming off our last discussion.
Where would we go?
Well, we've considered a couple of spots. If, on the Grove Street side of the building, if you're going north on Grove Street, if you look at the end of the middle school, there's the old Rutland Junior High School sign. Now that, I believe that was, the Grove Street entrance was the main entrance for that building for many, many years in the fifties and sixties. So that is one idea, and the other idea would be to put it right over the doors as you enter the Keith Gymnasium cafeteria area. And I believe it's roughly the same size as the sign, the intermediate, the Rutland Intermediate School sign that was placed on Lorraine and Meredith's building. So that's an idea, and it's, should be quite beautiful. And again, all of those materials were donated by Richard English, one of our parents, all the grout and the tiles. Should be quite beautiful. Okay. As you know, initially, our charge was to do what is called a zero-based budget, which opened the, the doors to people, for teachers to recommend what they felt was required to not only meet their needs, but maybe make up some of the shortfall that we had experienced in supplies over a number of years of austerity budgets. And consequently, the numbers that came in were quite large by comparison to what was level-funded in, well, at least the last four or five years anyway. When the disappointing early indicators came down from Montpelier, Dr. Brothers instructed us to plan for the worst-case scenario, the best being level-funded. So if I could clarify that, the best of a worst-case scenario would be for us to be level-funded. So what I put together for you is an indication of what that translates into for the middle school, based on purchase order requests and past budgetary requirements in the middle school for the accounts you see listed here, sixty-one, sixty-four, forty-three, sixty-five, and seventy-three hundred accounts. The purchase order requests submitted by personnel on Rutland Middle School totaled thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Level-funded from last year, you're looking at a dollar figure appropriated for the middle school of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. So you might at first glance think, well, you're in pretty good shape. Yes and no, and I think that's what we need, we need to consider here. These are unaddressed requested portions of the budget that have simply been put on the back burner. These are some of the materials that, or some of the information that was gleaned from our, our initial zero-based budget proposal. Now, the board had seen its way clear to provide us with our wonderful new technology program, and teacher enthusiasm was high, and I think that's reflected in this figure, which includes a tremendous amount of software across the five teams. I think the one that causes me the greatest concern is here at the library media. Kathy Hart brought in a budget of twelve thousand, sixty-one dollars, which at first glance may think that's unreasonable. I would remind the board, the commissioners, that my first two years here, or the first two years at the Rutland Middle School, the annual budget for the library was in excess of ten thousand dollars a year. We've been funding it at a rate of seven, of seventeen hundred dollars for at least the past three years and possibly four. I didn't go back that far. This number is reflected here, this being level-funded from a year ago. So I'm very concerned about where our middle school library is, is at currently in terms of its, its condition and how current it is and how current the, the selection is, et cetera. Kathy Hart informs me that the bare minimum she, she could possibly function with would be a little over four thousand dollars to, to facilitate or massage any kind of, of growth or recuperation in that program at all. So needless to say, this level-funded amount is not seeing, doesn't really touch that, touch the surface of that. I would attempt to massage the difference from here. That would be my plan. The music department also came in very high... The music department also came in very high, when Giles tells me that's primarily centered around instrumentation. Brass instruments available to our students, which are very costly, that's reflected here. That program, both band and chorus, is also level-funded here, because fourteen hundred dollars is included in this, but as you can see, there's quite a gap between what the music department requested and what they're level-funded at. Okay? The total unaddressed requested monies was around twenty-eight thousand dollars. But again, I would need to clarify that this was based on a zero-based budget, where people were given the freedom to express through their purchase order request what they felt was necessary, not only to fund their program for next year, but to make up for years of austerity. In terms of the staffing pattern at the middle school, I see no real change in the staffing pattern for the five teams. We know here is the open position in art that Dr. Brothers mentioned. That position is currently filled by Christine Brown, who has taken a leave of absence. I think it's also important to note that many of these positions are not solely funded by the district. All of your support teachers are fifty percent funded through other sources. Your, not only your school nurse, but your health teacher is also funded through, or partially funded through other sources, as is your speech and language pathologist. So there's seemingly more people here than we actually pay for. The support services teachers are funded at fifty percent, with local dollars. The speech and language pathologist is, we fund at around sixty percent, and I am not clear how much of the nurse, health, teacher position is funded by Medicaid dollars, but just a significant amount. Each of these teams consists of, there are four teams, academic teams and one unified arts team. The academic teams are made up of Kathy and Agnes, Michelle Winham, Roy McLeod, Christine Bachman. That's an example of English, she'll studies math and science, and a support services educator, which on this particular team is Debbie Sabore. Each of these teams have four core teachers and a support services teacher, and these are our unified arts teachers. And our support services counselor, full-time, funded by the district, is William Harrington. Currently, in school year ninety-five, ninety-six, it's not typed in here, but currently we have three hundred and thirty-five students. We're moving to three hundred and seventy-eight, and we're going up gradually, and we're going to peak out in ninety-eight, ninety-nine at around four hundred and eighteen students in the year two thousand. It seemed really strange today, I was preparing that, to be thinking in terms of the year two thousand, but it's fast approaching. We will be at about four hundred and twelve. That's roughly fourteen, four academic teams, that's ninety-five children a team per each academic team for next year. And it will gradually go up each year through the year two thousand. But there will be, on average, ninety-five students on each team. This was a model that we put into place several years ago. This team structure of the four teams, you might remember last year, we had some discussions about the fact that the middle school had the lowest class size average of any of the classrooms in the school district. And I told you that was true, it did, but that the model, we felt was important to keep in place, because this next year, that student load's going up, about thirty or forty students in that building, and it will creep up a little bit every year thereafter. And that team structure, you see in place there, set up to carry you through the year two thousand without changing, letting the, letting the size of the school grow. At that particular rate of level of student, we think it's an excellent model, and we think it's an economic model, and it's a way to operate a quality middle school. At this point, I can open it up to questions.
Sandy, you have basically a twenty-eight thousand dollar shortfall, if I may. Do you have any proposals, any suggestions, any preferences, any trade-offs of your current staffing patterns, or anything else that might have less value to you than the twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of technology and music and whatnot that is not funded under the current proposal?
Trade-offs in terms of school personnel? No, I wouldn't be comfortable making that recommendation to you. I think we must do something for our library. I think that seventeen hundred dollars is, at the risk of being silly, is a little ridiculous. That's a ridiculous amount, one to place into our library anymore, and we need to find ways to better fund that. And I think you can do that in a variety of ways. I think I have to massage the sixty-four hundred and twenty-four hundred accounts that supplies, books and periodicals for the whole program, and find additional funding. I would like to find between six and eight thousand dollars additional to begin to upgrade our library. It will be a part of our strategic plan, which we hope to have prepared for you, our three to five-year building-based strategic plan, and one of the priorities will be bringing our library back up to speed. But I cannot, given the demographics of our student population, I currently can't, can't recommend to you that we reduce staff to try and make up some of the shortfall.
You will record that, with the funds you have, allocate as much of it to increase that fund.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. I hope to find up to four thousand dollars minimum, and I would like to raise even more. I think that that program needs that kind of attention.
Madeline?
Of course, you know I'm going to support the library, but I wonder if we've looked at the libraries on Library Avenue, or could we look at the libraries on Library Avenue at some point a little differently? Because we're going to need to make our libraries really outstanding, to put some technology in there. And sixth graders, for example, or even fifth graders certainly have the ability to use the same kinds of materials as seventh and eighth graders. In fact, if we're truly challenging our students at the upper end, we would be doing that. So I wonder if in your long-range plan, there is a way to look at best utilizing a library so that perhaps it doesn't just serve seventh and eighth graders, and perhaps serves some younger students as well, and look at the program that way? Because I think where you're, where the middle school library, and I would venture to say the elementary school library, needs the most help is in challenging materials for grades five through eight, because that is the area that has been most neglected, and through which technology can be best used. I mean, a fifth grader can use Growers Encyclopedia on C D Row in the same way an eighth grader can, for example, and many third graders can actually do that. And is there a way to look at one of those libraries as perhaps being a resource for non-print materials, and another library to be a resource for print material? And utilize your money that way, rather than try and duplicate some services? And if that's anything the administrators have ever considered?
I can respond to that in a couple ways. I think there are drawbacks to having a K-8 librarian, but I think that one of the benefits that has come out of it is Mrs. Hart's link to both the intermediate and the middle school. That's, she is keenly aware of what she's got going in the intermediate school, and sadly aware of what she's got going in the middle school. She's done a couple of things. She's met with the leadership team in the middle school on several occasions, and we have pretty much committed ourselves to becoming a part of what is evolving into a three-twelve scope and sequence, if you will, of IBM-compatible access to information. And we have plans to do that. We have one gateway now. We're looking to expand upon that in the future. So yes, we are looking at that component. The other thing I think is, whereas the city of Rutland used to have five sending schools to the middle school, we now have one, and they're right next door. And I think that both Mrs. Buddhist and Ms. Crowley would be open to collaboration with me in terms of opening up that resource to fifth and grade, fifth and sixth grade students. So I think that your points are well-taken, and I think they're very doable, and I think they should be done.
Thank you.
Sandy, there's two other areas over there that we probably should just talk about a little bit tonight. And one would be that foreign language piece we initiated this year. Second would be this, the prospects of this additional health work to go through this transition year.
Okay. This year, we were fortunate to have Chris Katie from the high school come down and explore, or offer exploratories in foreign language. That was a very successful program. We have built room in our master schedule for that program to continue if the high school are able to see its way clear to offer us foreign language. So that space in the master schedule has been set aside, and Bruski is aware of where that's at, and he should be able to, well, I don't want to say that. I think he needs to wait to see how his foreign language schedule breaks out, but if he has room in his schedule, we have room in ours to accommodate foreign language for another year. In an attempt to move health education into the seventh grade, which was in keeping with the recommendation of the Health Education Committee, we have designed a way, and the Unified Arts rotation, to add a section of health for both grade levels for one transition year, and eventually enable us to offer health in the seventh grade on an ongoing basis. But there will be one year, one transition year, where we would add one component to the eighth-grade Unified Arts rotation.
Which, and by doing that, allows you to move some health into the seventh grade?
That's, you have to offer it in both grades, because if you don't, what would happen is you would have a year, a class move through the middle school without having had the opportunity to take it. Other questions?
Are those children able to move into a, is the help that, when those children finish in the middle school, that they would move into the second year of a language when they reach the high school? Or is it just to introduce them?
I don't think we're that, we don't have that kind of time block, Commissioner. Ms. Katie, Mrs. Katie was with us on even days.
I meant, I meant long range. Is that, is that a goal?
Oh, I would certainly be open to that. I think one of the things we've always been lacking is a foreign language component, both Spanish and French, and should finances allow, I'd grab it, I'd grab that opportunity in a heartbeat.
You had indicated that the foreign language program this year was successful? And against what kind of criteria?
In an exploratory sense.
And against what criteria did you measure that success?
Well, it's pretty easy, because we had never had any. So for us, just to have the opportunity to offer it to our kids is certainly one indication, to be able to offer something that we've never offered in the past, or at least in my tenure at the middle school. So in that sense, and kids enjoyed it. Chris gave us good feedback, many, many children through Integrated Studies got an opportunity to explore foreign language, and though it was not as intense as a full-time course, it certainly was an opportunity for kids to get a feel for foreign language that they've never had before. So I guess just the simple fact that we were able to offer something was, was a one positive indicator.
And there was, of course, still, of course, the commissioners are still taking it.
Yes, as we speak.
Both seventh and eighth graders.
Yes. But on a rotating basis.
How many kids did have the opportunity to be exposed, or what percentage of the student body, roughly?
Give me one moment to do the math. Hundred and sixty students over the course of the year. So roughly half, half the student population.
And were they pulled from another class, or were you able to avoid that?
No, we ran it with, against band and chorus, and some sections that depended on the team.
Okay. I think I'd asked that before.
Yeah. We did it during our Integrated Studies block, where there's more flexibility and more freedom. Some teams chose to differ, to do it differently. It was a team-by-team decision, and the flexible schedule, teams tried to decide where they could best fit it, and also work in sync with Chris Katie's schedule, which was somewhat difficult, because she was only able to come to us certain hours on certain days, the even days of the schedule.
John?
Bill? Sandy, from your perspective and your knowledge of the community, since we're running out of sources of money, is there any way you can use the facility? Is there anything you can bring into this facility that might generate income so that we could find a way to create more money that we could do something with? And I see us getting into a crunch, and certainly, as I look at your design and the numbers, and the increasing numbers of students, there does not seem to be a way to try and cut down on our existing costs. So you look on the other side, the income stream, and other than just raising taxes, since we're not getting an increase in tax base, really, I look to see if there's any creative ideas that we can generate money.
I have a very strong bias in that regard, and it's a, it's an untapped resource, in my opinion. I have a very good friend who lives in Virginia, and he belongs to a service club. And the service club he belongs to is affiliated with a school. And that service club works throughout the year to help offset expenses for that school. And I had never seen that level of commitment to a public school program, so I questioned him about it and got some more information. I think what, what I'm alluding to here is a partnership, some sort of affiliation, a partnership with one of the state colleges, a trade-off, where we would train their interns, and they in turn would, would offer our system something. A partnership with a business, a partnership with some other type of service or community organization. I don't think that we put enough time and energy on a building level, not on a district level, but on a building level, in recruiting support. And I know I don't do enough of it, and I can and should do more of it. And I think that people are willing to do that kind of a thing as opposed to see their taxes go up. I think if we put the kind of time and energy into rallying the resources that we put into our educating our children, which is tremendous, there's got to be some kind of payback in terms of community support. So I, my bias would be a partnership of some form.
I think it's important to note, Sandy, that certainly some, I'm sure service organizations have done a lot for the schooling, given the fact that Rotary enabled us to have an automated high school library to the twenty thousand.
Twenty million, twenty dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars. You know, I think that when we have gone to them, I think service organizations have been generous, and I think they routinely support probably every activity.
I agree, and I don't mean to imply that they know.
You're right. Well, I, I.
We have, we have had wonderful affiliation with the American Legion for a long, long time, and I think that Madeline's point is well-taken. I don't mean to imply that we don't have that kind of support. I'm saying that it's that kind of partnership with your community, all aspects of your community, that will help in, in meeting the. community, all aspects of your community, that will help in meeting the supply requirements. And I think it's a gives to gets. I think you trade community service for that kind of support and community involvement.
Are there any other kinds of things that could be brought in the school that kids need that could be purchased, that you could make some money there? Is there any other area? Because I think the partnership area, looking at other schools, is a great idea. If you have anything else, if there's time in the, in the facility, that sometimes somebody may have come to you in the past and said, you know, we would be interested to do X, Y, and Z, if it could generate some income, I'd like to know about it so we could evaluate it.
I believe there's lots, I believe that there are those who would be willing to work with us. Whether or not that, for instance, for many, many years, we did not put any, we did not endorse as a district any kind of advertising on anything that we had in the school. We had a very neutral position. We were very poor in the late eighties and we needed a new school board, a new scoreboard for our gymnasium.
A new school board.
Maybe the truth was said just.
We needed a new scoreboard. And the school board allowed for the Pepsi Corporation, I think it was Pepsi or Coca-Cola, one of the major providers, to place their logo on our scoreboard. And I think that that kind of thing is out there if you go looking for it. And then it becomes a decision about whether or not that kind of involvement is acceptable or appropriate or ethical. So I think there are a lot of issues. Could, could we do things to raise money? Sure. But I think that it's, I think we need to be careful. And I think one of the functions the superintendent serves is to oversee those kinds of things. I know he came to you this year and discussed at length how we raise funds because it was a concern. We were going to the community so much for support that he kind of tried to slow us down.
Sandy, I don't think you mentioned any student assistance program, the grant that we run for the school on the initiative up there.
We did, David, in working with Bill Harrington and Jerry Kreiser, brought a student assistance program, which is a drug and alcohol program to our school. And it's, we now have a drug and alcohol counselor who is with us two days a week for an entire work day and is doing a great deal to help our kids in that regard, those children who are at risk of those kinds of issues, are referred to this, this counselor. And she, her name's Maria Peabody, and she's doing some good things for us.
I don't think you mentioned that in response to Bill's question about outside sources of revenue.
Grants. I mean, David has been instrumental in bringing significant amounts of money to our district in the form of grants. And that one is just one example, although it does not speak to the, the supplies issue. It certainly is a tremendously needed service that comes to us without cost.
Sandy?
Thank you.
Follow the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Sandy.
I want to talk a little bit about athletics, the salary study, and what Quinn's recommendation is on that. That's an important piece of our budget.
Get a chair. Get a chair so I can sit next to the board here.
Chris, let me, Glenn Giles asked, he's at the eighth grade orientation tonight. He did ask me to mention before I get started, if I would. He asked me to mention that tomorrow evening at seven o'clock at the Keith Gym is the All-City's Band Concert, All-City Band Concert for the Music in Our Schools Month. And that's the Keith Gym at seven o'clock tomorrow evening for those who are available and would like to attend. About a year and a half ago, actually about fifteen months ago, the Athletic Council was asked to take a look at the coaching stipends, how we determine them and how they're all set up, and whether or not any changes need to be made in that. We approached it from a couple different angles. Number one was taking a look at what our, I'm going to need that. Sorry. You're doing a great job with it, but I won't. One was to take a look at what our coaches are doing now and what their coaching involves. And the second angle is what are other schools doing? What else is out there? There's some more innovative ideas in how our salary structure could be set up. And we began, first of all, by taking a look at the type of numbers that we're dealing with right now. These are the numbers actually for this fall of our athletes that participated. As you can see, both at the high school, both the high school and middle school levels. And as you'll notice as we go through this, the largest number is in the fall, where we have three hundred and fifty-seven participants this year, which I think is a, it's a pretty good number when you consider the number of students we have from seven to twelve. It's also a substantial increase over where we were a couple of years ago. I don't have those numbers for you. They are not available. But a couple of things have changed since then, the addition of three freshman teams that were not in place three years ago, which have prevented having to cut students for programs who would like to participate. And that's helped bring in, it was up to three hundred and fifty-seven that we currently Things slowed down a bit in the winter. The largest area of increase is the middle school basketball program. As you can see, we have forty-four seventh, eighth grade boys participating. And we have just about forty seventh, eighth grade girls participating this year. We tried something a little different to try to keep them all involved. Wasn't as successful as we hoped. We're going to have to make some changes there, another way, find other ways to keep them all involved to help them all have a good experience at the same time. Here Alpine Skiing, that's the way the number is there. We've got one coach dealing with those forty athletes. And it went down to two hundred and thirty-six participants. Spring was a tough one to be, there's a little bit of estimating here, particularly at the middle school level, since we hadn't even met with those students yet when I put this together. A couple of things you should point out, we may have looked at, Varsity Softball is thirty-seven, JB doesn't have any. At this point, we were just taking the whole number of female athletes who triumphed in softball and they had been cut, the teams had to split up. So that's why it's indicated the way it is there. Middle school, we're just estimating based on our numbers from last year. Program has shown the greatest amount of increase here. Well, first of all, we'll be pointing out that lacrosse is just a club program. We're not funding that in any way. Ryan Parkman and actually a student teacher from Castleton is working at the school, working with Mary Crowe, are running that for a bunch of young ladies who are just really interested in lacrosse and they're out practicing. They're using John, John's gymnasium for some practice time. And they'll be trying to pick up just a couple of scrimmages. So that, we did just indicate that showing a number of girls that are interested in participating. And that was the same case with the wrestling on the previous page. And our spring numbers jumped back up again. Down at the bottom, eight hundred and ninety-eight is the total number of participants for the year. In terms of one time, that's, you know, some kids can be counted three times in this figure. Down at the bottom here, there are actually four hundred and ten senior high students who participate in at least one athletic activity and a hundred and fifty-five middle school students. The next piece of information in your packet, probably look, I don't have this on overhead because it won't fit. This is a survey, as I said, we took this from two, from two approaches. One was what are our people doing? And this, this is a survey we did of our coaches. Time and season was, and this is really difficult for coaches to do. They tried, I have more comments about how hard they found this to do, try to estimate their time. And we asked them to kind of take a look at actual contact time or actually sitting there working on that particular sport, not necessarily additional reading time or, or anything that may go on. You may, at first glance, look across, as I did this today and took a look, as I said, this was almost about nine months ago, I think, now that we did this, and see varsity football time and season three hundred, and then look varsity boys soccer at three fifty. I think we will find, what you really do is combine the time and season and the prep time, in which case football, you see, jumps up to four hundred and fifty, which more accurately probably reflects the time in that sport. Students is the number of students that are in that particular program. Exposure, very much a subjective evaluation there, the amount of exposure that that particular program has, both in terms of the media and in terms of maybe the number of people that attend. Equipment, dealing with the responsibility to the equipment, both in terms of proper care and in terms of amount that each team might have. For instance, football, you run into some real liability issues with that equipment, making sure that it's all proper, properly fitted. We've had a real nice partnership that was kind of brought to us in the addition of our football coach coming from Norwich, and that the Norwich Equipment Manager actually comes down and helps fit our athletes because it's really essential that equipment fits properly. And it's, it's a lot more difficult than you would imagine. So Mike's had a nice connection there with his former equipment manager at Norwich who's helped out there. Skill knowledge, each sport has a little more probably requirement of the amount of skill and each level does also. And then travel supervision. This is a survey we did of all our coaches to kind of try and put everybody on a scale to see exactly what are they doing within their programs. And we do have all the programs included there. There are a couple, as you go through, for instance, on the fourth page, you see junior high baseball is pretty much blank, other than a couple, the number I just threw in there, estimating based on last year. And that's because in the past, junior high baseball and softball were run, I don't like to use the term intermurdered, but they weren't a full-fledged intrascholastic like all our other middle school teams are or any of our other teams. That now, the coaches were paid on hourly wage. They were limited to how much time they could spend. The students were able to alternate between that and track. As of this year, they, they will start play basically a full season like all the other middle school teams do. So that's why there are no numbers reflected there. Before I move on, because I know this, this part is probably a little, probably get this in your packet and wondered what it was you were looking at. Are there any questions I can answer on this specific piece?
Yeah, I just wanted to backtrack for a minute on the numbers. You have, as one of the assistant track coaches, I'm looking at the spring season, is one of the assistant track coaches responsible for junior high track?
Yes. Well, let me backtrack. We've also changed junior high track the last two years. We had a separate program there. As I just previously mentioned, the kids kind of alternated back and forth. It really didn't work as well as we had hoped. Last year, the varsity program absorbed the middle school track athletes into it. They trained with the varsity and they competed in varsity meets. And actually, that had a great deal of success, I think.
And another question. And I don't want to single out particular programs, but when the numbers are extremely low, let's use an arbitrary figure like ten. If you have participation less than ten, what strategy are you using to increase participation?
Let me start, probably a percentage would be a little more accurate way to look at it because ten in some sports would be fine. So say, you know, not enough to score, maybe an individual sport, which we have several individual sports of, we've asked the, or have asked the coaches a couple of sports where that's happened, to take an aggressive approach to trying to encourage kids to participate in their programs. If not, then we have to really look and weigh the value of keeping those programs. But I think the first thing to do is take, take an aggressive approach and see if there aren't more athletes that are interested in getting involved. As you can see from most of our numbers, that's, most of our programs, we don't have that problem. It's the opposite. Any other questions related to that? Okay, the next piece in your packet, I don't have on overhead because as you can see, it's hard enough to read probably as you have it there. But I do have a graph to reflect that information. These are the starting salaries of Division One schools. And you can see across the top of the spreadsheet that you have a list of schools' size. We kind of fall a little under average of those schools. That would be average being nine hundred and sixty-five. If you go across and look at this, you have information that breaks down every coaching position. But I think we just take the average, you look across, we're just a little bit under average in starting salaries, but certainly not bad by any means. It's quite, as you can see, quite a variation in these salaries ranging from South Burlington, Burlington, and dropping down to North Country. And as I said, you do have the information broken out a little bit further in the spreadsheet. The second thing that we took a look at, and I need to explain why we, why we picked this year, was a fourth year coaching stipend. The reason for selecting the fourth year, when we were always operating under a ten-year pay scale, was our average coaches' years of service was three point eight. I was surprised at how low it was. And seeing that kind of side that came out of it was that we need to make a concerted effort to try to keep coaches around, add a little more continuity to the program. So based on a three point eight average years of service, which I have to add is up to over five this year, we took the fourth year. And you'll see in the fourth year, we're slightly above average in this case. You can see this quite, everybody seems to, or the majority of schools tend to lump together now with South Burlington, because they kind of love there. One thing I have to mention in this case is, one thing that does have a little bit of impact, is although the majority of schools do use a ten-year step system as we do, and have, there are a couple of schools that go on five years. So you don't note their increase here. I think they're doing one of those. And a couple others that go two years. So the next jump would also come on the fifth year. There are a couple that go zero to three, four and five, and there are other formats like that. But the majority are using ten-step, ten-step pay format is what we've been using. The next graph that I just want to put up, you don't have the spreadsheet on this because it would have been, with a number of schools, would have been rather difficult to squeeze it all into something that you could still read. And that's a comparison of all schools, not taking into account size of school. And this is Rutland right here, in this case.
What is this? Is this based on a certain year plan or?
This is last year.
Last year?
Last year, yes.
All Division Months?
Now we're into all schools that returned survey. And I guess I should clarify that. Obviously, there's all those schools in this, but it's amazing how difficult it is to get some of this information. Here's average. And in this case now, when you figure in all schools, you see we're slightly above average there, probably by about fifty dollars. Are there any questions on that information? That was the second part that we took a look at. First was what are our coaches doing? Second is what are other schools doing? After taking a look at all that information, and to be honest, we kind of undertook this task with the idea of we need to do something different. We need to come up with a different way of reimbursing coaches. And after we gathered all this information and looked at what we were already doing, the consensus for the Athletic Council was why reinvent the wheel? What we have seems to be working, seems to be working well. The one thing that did come out of it, however, out of the survey that we did, is maybe we need to move a few steps around, change the location of a couple of teams, the category they're in. And that's the recommended co-curricular steps chart that you have, you know, the chart that Pedro has category one, two, three, four, five, and six. We did make a couple of changes there, a couple of programs dropped in, dropped a category, and then a couple others may have moved up.
No question about that. I see the red and white in category six, but isn't red and white now a journalism class?
This, this we did put together last year. It was still in there, recommended stuff. This was done throughout the course of last year.
Okay.
Category three, you've got drama. Is that drama regardless of what level it's at? Anybody that's a drama?
Well, the way, at this point, the, the non-athletic activities, we just put in this as a recommendation for reimbursement. The only ones that were actually operating under this are the athletic ones. And back in October, I believe, it came with a recommendation for stipend for all the journal and all these other activities. But basically, any, let's take any position. When I say ice hockey, it would base who, what first, that person in category one. that person, that person in category one, but it's based on the years of service, which is the next page.
No, I know, I know that, but my question was, in category three, there's drama, does that mean the drama coach at the senior high and the drama coach at the middle school? Whoever's the drama coach falls in there?
We took a look for non-athletics, but just the high school.
And so this does not reflect?
Part of that non-athletic.
Yeah, yeah.
This does not reflect, then, middle school or elementary school positions? This is only?
Only coaching seven through twelve. Coaching is seven through twelve.
And extracurricular, nine through twelve.
Right, right. Those recommendations for, you know, middle school would come from Sandy in terms of those type matters.
Now, a coach comes onto this schedule at step one, if he comes, if he's coached someplace else for three years, does he come in at step four?
We've credited coaches up to step three, in terms of years of service. And this is one of the things we took a look at, is this, do we need to change this? And quite honestly, as we discussed it, there really didn't seem to be any legitimate reasons for doing that. Not that just because it's what everybody else does makes it right, but it really seemed to make a lot of sense. We're, we're really trying to, there were, we took a look at the multiple year, you know, zero to three, four to six increments, and one thing that I was, as I said before, kind of surprised at was that our average coaches like to stay, it was only three point eight years. And I certainly would like to see us encouraging longevity for a little continuity within the programs. I think one way to do that is to have a yearly increase, rather than waiting till the fourth year and jumping it, jumping it up to the same amount, but doing it all at one time. I think we encourage them to stay around a little more, maybe.
I don't have the best knowledge of athletics on this board, but didn't we lose in the last, maybe four or five years, a basketball coach that had many, many years of service and a football coach that had many, many years of service? So that maybe what we're doing is rebuilding that?
Yes, oh yeah, yeah.
You know, that, that, we have had coaches that have had long service, but in recent history, some have retired.
But we're, my, a large part of my concern comes is with the non-varsity levels. There were some programs that had almost yearly turnover, and the people who coached at JV freshman or middle school level, and I think it's important to try to encourage those people to stay also, and we're starting to see a lot more of that, as can be seen from our jump of, you know, up to a little over five this year. So with the Coach's salary proposal, you see, it started low in category six, first year of eight hundred and fifty-one dollars approximately, to category ten, tenth year of forty-four hundred. The other change that was made, well, not so minor changes, category six, we did lower where that one starts from where it used to be.
I would like, I'd like to see the proposal reflect, though, for example, varsity, high school drama, or high school art, so that when this is finalized, it's clear that the co-curricular steps, the level that they're at. Because whereas, we know the Talisman is the yearbook, as John pointed out, drama could be anywhere, chorus could be anywhere, junior high could be anywhere, so that, that grade level should be reflected in the title.
Any other questions?
This is the result of the work that Glenn did with the Athletic Council in reviewing, a system used to compensate coaches, and it's a system we'll continue using unless there's some, you know, due as part of the school board to take off in some other kinds of directions. And it's the basis for the salary figures that you'll see as we report the high school budget to you at the next board meeting. The piece that deals with athletics will represent this, the system, which is a little change, but not an awful lot.
I guess, you said something that just triggered something for me. You said that this is the result of the Athletic Council.
Yes.
I've said this before. If this is the, if it's the Athletic Council, I want them to deal with athletics. If it's the Athletic and Extracurricular Council, I want representation on that council to represent extracurricular. I never seem to get a response to that.
I think, you know, the Policy Committee has been working on that, and in fact, the committee will have a recommendation for the school board to consider, in a not-too-distant future, on actually two separate councils that would meet periodically, but actually do two separate councils.
Glenn, you had indicated that three point eight years of service that is for coaches here in Rutland, is that, or is that a statewide?
No, that was ours. I would have no way of calling that statewide, yeah. You know, all we look at statewide were basically this, this type of, these two types of information from the other schools.
Okay, so what, so what you're saying is that, on the average, everyone is on somewhere between the third and fourth step?
Last year.
Okay, so next year, on the average, they'll be on the fourth step. And there are ten more, there are six more steps to move up. Could, could we end up with a fiscal nightmare? If we're, if the end result is, and we're looking for coaches to stay, are we eventually going to be looking at some of our more senior coaches and saying, we could replace a more senior coach with two junior coaches? And I guess that I'm wondering if you see any kind of a talk with that. I think that, I think that the step system for teaching salaries is many times under fire, and I guess I'm wondering if by perpetuating a step system for coaching salaries, we might also be opening ourselves up for the same kind of circumstances.
I certainly think, you know, I'd have to say that it certainly is a possibility. But I would also, you know, I should consider the value that a person with the years of experience can bring to the program, and I think that, you know, we look at the number of hours that coaches put in, and as I said, I think that's very conservative figures that they came up with. There's certainly nobody that's walking away from coaching any of our programs that's going to get rich from it by any means. There's certainly, if they don't have a love of the sport and working with young kids, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do it for the money, as it is. So I, certainly if we increase our year average years of service, that's gonna change. But I don't think we'll ever, we're always gonna have some turnover. I just would like to see it minimized. Glenn, just as a topic of discussion, we're looking at increasing our budget for athletics because we're not anticipating that the reader rooters will be able to raise the degree of funds that they have in the pen. I accept that. In looking at ways to reduce costs, is it possible to look at something hypothetically like the football program? And hire a head football coach and tell him or her what their budget is, and allow him to use that budget to hire as much or as little staff as he needs to run the entire football program, from varsity down as far as we want it to go? My thinking being that, if they're recruiting and hiring their own coaches, am I wrong in thinking that there might be people who would be willing to work with that varsity coach for less? I mean, I watch now, there seems to be a few dollar a year type people that come along and stay along. Is there any possibility to something like that? I guess my answer is, I don't know, I've never thought that's, I've never thought of anything along that line. We do have a few dollar a year people now, they're mostly in the role of assistant at each level, as opposed to being the JV coach or the freshman coach there. For instance, in basketball, Dave Kinsman had a dollar a year assistant, who was basically a volunteer, but we don't have anybody in that position who's actually running a team at any level. I'm not sure. I just wonder if the head coach of whatever sport might be able to recruit and fund a staff that would cost less gross dollars than we currently have the budget to spend to hire. I don't know the answer, I'm raising a question. I think, I think it's possible, like, certainly recruit some people, given coming up with some different numbers, whatever they determine. You know, although I said, certainly nobody's in it for the money, I think if we're looking at some good people, particularly sports, say like football or field hockey, we're very difficult to find coaches in, particularly qualified coaches. Field hockey, for the best example, very difficult to find qualified people in that. If we lowered what we're doing now, as you see, we're pretty much average Division One level, I think we'd be battling, maybe losing some battles for some people that we'd like to have, that would be one concern, though.
It's hard to say whether that would happen or not, but that would be one concern, I guess, that would happen.
You take it back on this, talking to the statewide council, or?
I'm just guessing maybe it's something you look at.
Throw a lump sum and say, you divided.
You're in charge of the hypothetical football program. You staff it, you fund it within your budget, and let us know how you do.
I'll bring that up.
I have confidence in delegating those kinds of responsibilities.
I'll take the comment today, I think this is very well put together and very clearly presented.
Thank you.
On these, on the amounts with the steps, in line with what you're talking about, limiting the cost, would it be possible, or would it be important in the program to have some type of cap or limit on what the person or area could get to, regardless of years of tenure? So that we have a tight in limits on cost.
That's certainly something we could discuss. Within program, you talk about?
Yeah, I would think the guy who's been coaching particularly the work for five, six, seven years, money certainly isn't the issue. If they can battle battles for that length of time.
And certainly, in a way, there's kind of a cap in the sense that once they hit the tenth step, they stop there, but obviously, since it's based on a base which has been increasing for the most part, there is some sort of increased area.
This was based on the teacher salary, is it?
Yes.
Is it still tied to that?
Yes, as you can see on the Coach's salary, format's tied to it.
Okay.
Other than the actual range or in the contract.
Okay, but, but essentially, we're still following the same practice that we were following when it was?
That's the one that's older, so. Yeah, on the Coach's salary proposal, ninety-six, ninety-seven chart, you see the base list of theirs, next year's teacher's base.
Ballpark figure, let's see, total enrollment at the high school?
Over nine hundred.
And four hundred and ten are just being in athletics. That's roughly, a little less than half.
How does that compare with other Division One schools or other schools, the level of participation?
Well, I have to think back to the surveys they did now on the show, I agree, like, it was better than most. How it compares in terms of an average, I don't have those numbers available, but compared to most of them, we're definitely, definitely one of the higher, higher rates of participation of Division One schools anyways. We also took a look at, part of the survey was all the non-athletic activities, and we're definitely one of the leaders in terms of number of non-athletic activities available for our students.
Can you try and find out through the VPA, if there are any comparative data, so that we can look at the percentage of our kids involved in athletic and the percentage of our kids involved in non-athletic activities?
The VPA does do a survey on a yearly basis that, you know, I get, in fact, they just sent it a couple of weeks ago, but they only choose the common activities. By that I mean debate, the Drama Festival, yearbook, they don't have a lot of these other activities that we would have. So they would have those core, so to speak, activities, but they wouldn't have some of the extra things that we have available for our students. That's not included on the survey.
We talk about this all the time, in response to the youth's behaviors or their results, if you help us know how we compare those.
Yeah, I can certainly find out in terms of those core activities. Sandy?
I think that the four hundred and some athletes in high school and a hundred and fifty some athletes in the middle school, coupled with what we did just a week or two ago, in the auditorium with the all-city choir, which was in excess of three hundred and fifty students. Coming this week, I believe, or next week is the all-city band. And those two areas alone, band, chorus and athletics, you're talking, I know there's some duplicates there, but you're talking between seven hundred and a thousand children? That's, that's a lot of children, you know, in grade six through twelve. I mean, that's, that's a lot of children. I think it's a credit to not only the athletic department, but the music department as well, as a very, very healthy statistic.
We're seeing in a lot of, I certainly don't have many survey results, but a lot of professional generals, the apathy of some kids towards participating in the decrease in numbers a lot of schools are battling with, and, you know, as you can see from our numbers, and particularly over the last few years, with your agreeing to have the freshman teams with added, our numbers are going up, which is certainly encouraging.
I can only speak from my experience in visiting other schools, that we certainly have many more offerings than other schools do, and our children have lots of opportunities to participate in almost, and I would say in anything that interests them, because I think teachers are willing to start a club if there is interest in it, and I think that's a credit to the staff.
Particularly interested to see the, this paper article, photographed the other morning, chess activity taking place early in the morning, at the intermediate school cafeteria.
Children make it, but Kevin O'Hara has it good.
Is he here?
No, but he's watching it on TV.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Glenn, let me suggest you have a long career in administration ahead of you. You're planning to, you're sick, because they come in here tonight.
Hanging in there.
That's a credit to you.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Dick. Bob, could you do your thing now for me, please? You'll be up here soon.
I'd like to shift to the other side. We always have to move.
I'll take that under consideration.
I'd like to see the screen put on that side.
That's the day we switch, then.
You might have to sit next to me, though, Al.
That may not be the right.
Moving right along, yes. I'd like to comment upon the work you see up on the side wall here, which is the work coming out of the high school artwork with Mary Crowley, and the work in the back, of course, is from Rutland Intermediate School. That, of course, leads me into the, just the report that last Friday evening, the student art exhibit started, or began, over at the Chaffee Art Museum. If you would really like to see some delightful pieces of work, go over there someday and walk through it, you'll see some amazing talent in this community, and in fact, around Rutland County. Now, I have to just take a few minutes and also comment upon the sons and daughters of two of our school board commissioners, whose work is on display over there also. And that's Mrs. Sherman and her daughter, and Debbie Marrow and two of her sons. So we have good representation at the Chaffee.
And my nephew's fostered, Jim Hendrix is there.
Okay. But I'm really, really serious about that. Last Friday, from five o'clock on, it was really mobbed and crowded, and hard to walk through the different galleries, but a normal late afternoon, it is not as crowded, and you can, you can go through fairly quickly and see a lot of different pieces, and I would suggest you do that. It's absolutely, absolutely amazing. I'd like to also just take a quiet moment or two and extend my sympathy, and I'm sure the school commissioners, to the family of Doris Farnikoff, whose mother just passed away recently, and in fact, she, in fact, is in Pennsylvania now, attending to those details. Doris is a speech and language pathologist that's working at the middle school for us. The Assistant Superintendent search process, I just wanted to talk about the way that's been proceeding forward. Some sixty-one, sixty-two applications, and we've screened it down to approximately twelve finalists to invite in for interviews. It's a significant piece of work, in which there are ten teachers, school board members, community people involved in helping with that process. Just wanted to say it's, it's moving along.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
As a company at this point. I was not at the. As a colleague at this point, I was not at the board meeting where this, where the discussion of the title took place, but I did just look at the videotape of the board meeting, and it seemed to me implied from the videotape of the board meeting that the person needed to have certification or working towards certification as a superintendent, because when Ted tried to, when, when the original motion was defeated and Ted made a motion to call it the assistant superintendent for curriculum, he wanted to also change it to qualified or certifiable as a superintendent, and the comment from Dr. Dick was that if it's an assistant superintendent, it is implied that they will have that certification or working towards that certification. But the advertisement said either superintendent or principal, and/or principal. So I guess I would like some direction from the board on that. Do we want the, I mean, the motion seemed clear that the person needed to be certified or, or working towards certification.
My recollection, that was the intent, the motion and the passage by the board, that they were certified or certifiable with a superintendent licensure.
Okay. Then the other question that I would have is Ted and I are on the committee, but it's my understanding that the way the process is going to work is that this next group will be interviewed, and then a smaller amount, perhaps three or four, will be given to the superintendent and to David Walk to bring a single person to the board. And I wanted to know if the rest of the board was comfortable with that, or do they feel that they would like more board members involved as the process gets narrower?
As far as I'm concerned, you and Ted are the representation of the board, and I'm comfortable with you doing a good job.
And keeping us abreast and posted, and asking for any parameters or input or, or whatnot.
My question to you, Madeline, would you be feeling more comfortable if there was more board representation on that committee?
Well, I was just looking at if, if, if the situation were reversed, if two of you were on the committee and I weren't, and I know that I would want more representation on the committee, and.
Menace, go ahead.
So, you know, I, I just wanted to give other board members that opportunity if, if they felt they wanted more representation on the committee.
Well, speak quickly if you choose, because this Friday afternoon, we have people coming in next Monday, Tuesday, possibly the Monday after that, and the Monday and Tuesday after that.
Any response to Madeline's request?
I would certainly be interested. I need to check if you are on the schedule. I would be interested in seeing you on those, if you know.
I'm fine.
Fine. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
The youth service center, David, could you make a few comments about that? That's really been a piece you've been working hard on the past several weeks.
I believe two meetings ago, when we were doing a, we had a discussion of grant status update, all the grants that we had applied for, those which we'd received, those which were still pending. I mentioned that we were entering into a cooperative grant application with an advisory group of about forty people for a grant funded through the Safe and Drug Free Schools and Communities Act called the Community Partnership Grant. It ended up being a very time-consuming and, but inclusive, grant application, which included probably forty people representing business and community agencies, recreation department, the mayor, some aldermen, and lots of others who helped us put it together. We had eighteen letters of support from different folks, and this is the grant application. No, I'm not going to read it to you, but I'll just quickly summarize that we applied for about ninety-eight thousand dollars. The state will be awarding to, up to six school districts approximately seventy-eight thousand dollars as an average for activities, programs, services, which will reduce student youth risk behaviors and which will promote positive, healthy activities among our youth. We put a lot of time into this because we think in partnership with other agencies that we can do some good things for kids, two-thirds of the amount would go towards the establishment of a youth services center. A youth services center that would be, which would have offices and a center at Southeast School in cooperation with VAC, but which would offer activities in all of our schools. And these are the things that it would do. It would reinvigorate the ramp program, which is the Rutland Area Mentoring Program, sort of like a big brother, big sister program, that would provide a full-time coordinator for that program to really bring it to life, because there are lots more little brothers and little sisters out there right now than there are big brothers and big sisters, and we need someone to coordinate that. It would expand our intramural program, which you talked about earlier, in all of our schools. It would provide increased cultural activities and recreational opportunities for kids. It would provide a center for community service activities. It would be an information referral and support services center. We would do some job counseling, bringing in DET and other agencies. So it wouldn't just be a teen center, wouldn't just be a rec center, but it would have sort of a comprehensive vision, which would provide lots of activities for young people as alternatives to some of the youth risk behaviors that we've talked about around this table. The second part of the grant, about a third of the money, would go towards helping to subsidize professional development opportunities for teachers and for others in the community, including law enforcement officials and others, to help students reduce these youth risk behaviors. That would include additional train, training in our project adventure leadership course. It would provide some training in conflict resolution, gang prevention curriculum, and it would also look at, it would also fund a good portion of the responsive classroom summer institute, which will be offering at Rutland Intermediate School in mid-August this summer. That's a program that I referenced at the last meeting. So it's a fairly significant grant opportunity. It was completed at the end of last week. A lot of people put a lot of time into it, and I did find out late this afternoon that as I was gleaning information from lots of different organizations, including SRS and Rutland Area Community Services, which is the name for what used to be Rutland Mental Health, and, and the police department, that I received some information that was not completely accurate from the police department, and I found that out late this afternoon. So tomorrow I'll be writing a, an amendment letter to the funding agency correcting that information. That was a small piece in a hundred-page application that I'll be correcting, because the information that we got was incorrect, and it has since been corrected. But we're very hopeful about this. There will, there will be a review by a grant review team on April ninth and tenth in Waterbury. We hope to be one of the finalists then, and we'll find out by May first whether or not we're funded. Any questions about that?
Guys, this is a one-year grant?
It is. The grant application said that it may be funded for a second and a third year, but it depends upon what Congress does with safe and drug-free school money.
I just, I've been reading about all the events of the last couple of weeks, and I applaud your efforts, because I think, my personal opinion, outside of the school system, once youth reach a certain age in this community, we neglect them. I'm talking about junior high. And even though it's near my neighborhood, I do support this endeavor.
Well, I appreciate that. We had a lively meeting at Dana Recreation Center last week with lots of neighbors who were concerned about the possible sighting at that facility. We believe that the Southeast School site, which is still controlled by the school department with thirteen acres of playground space and being on the bus route and not being in as, immersed in a neighborhood as some of the other facilities, is a good spot for it, and we would work out that arrangement with the Vermont Achievement Center, which, as you know, runs the day program, the alternate program at that site. No property tax dollars, no property tax dollars to go to support this facility in this plan.
Will this plan impact the revenue source that the school district has seen from that building this past year?
No, it will not. That'll stay the same.
David, David, happy birthday.
Good story to that.
Do you think in the future it might be possible that we should get some kind of information on proposals like Southeast School before we read it in the, in the paper?
It would be our preference, Nancy, to operate like that. This one was changing so fast under our feet that we really didn't have time. That's, that's why in this case, but yes, you're absolutely right, and that would be our preferred method of style. The school calendar for ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-six, ninety-seven has gone through the, excuse me, parent conferences. I just put an item in there to speak to the fact that third quarter parent conferences in our elementary schools are being held next week, and we are, we did run into some conflicts with religious holidays next week, which was something that many of us had seen in the calendar when we established it last spring or even this past fall. Our elementary buildings are working around those issues and extending evenings and days, even to the week afterwards, and we hope that, we trust that everyone, both staff and parents alike, are being taken care of in their desires to have a conference, of course, with their teacher, and also to honor and respect their own particular religious persuasion. So those conferences are formally scheduled for next week, but exceptions are being arranged. And then the, the school calendar for next year has gone through the process of discussion, seeking input from all the school district unions, and it's gone through the voting process with the regional superintendents, and that's the calendar which you see here before you in your packet, and if it's, serves your pleasure, we would certainly solicit approval of it tonight.
I move to accept the calendar. Second, comments and discussion regarding the calendar, Madeline.
Doc Brothers, would we, I noticed that conferences are the seventh and the eighth, and we had talked about perhaps offering the Keep Gym as a polling place in November. I guess, would we be able to do it with conferences on the seventh, on the, would we still be able to offer that as a polling site, and would it be easier to do so if conferences were the fourth and the fifth instead of the seventh and the eighth?
I don't know why the conferences on the seventh and the eighth would affect the use of the gym.
No, well, I, I thought that in terms of parking, if conferences were the seventh and the eighth, were the fourth and the fifth instead of the seventh and the eighth, you wouldn't have kids in school, and it would be easy to offer that as a site.
I'm trying to think if that's a regular holiday. I don't think that's a school holiday, unless we'd have it on the calendar.
I know, no, it's not. And so what I'm looking at, instead of having parent conferences on the seventh and eighth, if we held parents and conferences on the fourth and fifth, there would be no question about, you know, in terms of parking and student use of the gym, that it would be open for Election Day, whereas we could still offer it as a polling place when kids were in session, but it would be easier to do it when kids weren't there.
Let me look into that for you, Madeline, because that part of the calendar isn't the official thing we have to approve of the county and the tech school, so that we can make an adjustment on. Let's take a look at that and come back to you with an answer.
Okay.
All right.
And then I did have another concern, and that is, and it's a concern I've had before, but I'm going to say it again. This is the whitest state in the union. Everybody knows that, and I think that because of that, it behooves us to recognize Martin Luther King's birthday as a holiday. It is a state holiday. It's not a mandatory holiday, but I think by not recognizing it as a holiday, it says something about this district and about our general attitudes. I mean, in, in New York City, in Los Angeles, in Miami, I venture to say that this is a holiday because there is a large ethnic minority, probably in some of those places, a majority. But here, we kind of slough it off, and I'm disappointed that the superintendents don't look at that as an opportunity to recognize the holiday and say that this man's worth was tremendous, and what he did in terms of civil rights and making us aware of our differences is something that we should observe and honor as a holiday. And I would like to see them look at that again, because I think it's time that the board looked at that. I mean, this year we did have it as an in-service day, so that it, well, the students had it off. I would hope that teachers use that opportunity when there is a day off to explain why it's off, but I'm just disappointed that we continue to overlook that.
I hear what you're saying, Madeline. On, on the practical end of the spectrum, I believe all of our holidays are negotiated with our unions, and I don't think the school board can change holidays or add holidays without going through union contractual agreements. So I think that's something that maybe would mention to the negotiating committee to see if the unions are interested in moving one of their holidays to Martin Luther King Day where it would fit into the calendar.
I would, and I would like the negotiating team to pursue that, because I mentioned this before when you first gave us this calendar for our perusal. I do think Martin Luther King Junior's Day should be a holiday, and I don't, I don't think an in-service is good enough. I think for the reasons Madeline stated, it's important for this district and this state to recognize that day, and I would request that the negotiating team look into that for the future. Perhaps we can't do anything about it for the upcoming school year, but I think it's something we should look at seriously.
Cheryl?
I'm not certain, but I believe that the state statutes governing the handling of Martin Luther King's birthday talks about if school is in session, then there is a requirement that the reasons for Martin Luther King being honored are discussed within the period of the school day. And I guess my feeling about making kids aware of the reasons why Martin Luther King was great and continues to be great are probably addressed better by discussing it in school as opposed to having the holiday. My guess is that if the kids are out of school, there would be very little discussion about why they were out, and far more discussion if school was in session that day.
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think, take Thanksgiving, for instance, I know at least the elementary level, there is a lot of discussion these days about what that holiday means, about native cultures, and, and you can take any holiday, I think, that we have, and I think the schools do a pretty good job in the days preceding that holiday, and I, I think I have confidence that they would do the same if this was a holiday.
And I would point out that I think if you looked at the state statute on Lincoln's birthday, it's going to say that Lincoln's birthday is a holiday, and that there should be discussion about Lincoln on the day before the holiday, yet we don't observe Lincoln's birthday as a holiday in this district. So to me, it's a philosophical thing. I don't believe the contract prevents us from giving that off as a holiday. I think that we have flexibility within the number of days we have school. Whether or not it's a paid holiday or not is something you have to decide, but.
Well, I would like to remind everyone at the same time that we don't have complete authoritization. autonomy in the development of the calendar. We're given the privilege of operating a vocational school in this state, and we have to operate that school for all the residents and students in the county. And I have one vote among six votes and establish in this calendar, which is the master calendar for the vocational school when it's going to be open for kids. I understand and am sympathetic to all your issues, and I know that was discussed amongst the superintendents, and that both of them were in favor of setting the calendar up in this way this year. So I will certainly see that that's brought back to the superintendent's table again for future discussions in other years, and I will make sure that that happens. But I just wanted to add that to the, to the understanding around here also.
Well, I understand that, Dr. Brothers, but I know that not every school district in this state has the same, in this, this county has the same calendar as the vocational school.
I know that, but one thing we've been trying to do harder, more and more the past couple of years is get more and more consistent, so we have more cost-effective use of the days that the building is open, or when it's closed.
Further discussion in the calendar? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Now, can I have a hand vote? All those in favor of the motion, please raise their hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, eight. Those opposed? The motion passes eight to two. Thank you.
Finally, under my report, I just want to report briefly to you that WWIN TV station housed in Burlington has contacted me. They're, they are establishing a presence in Rutland County. And for several months, they, they want to rent a tiny bit of space in our high school so they can beam an antenna or dish at Grandpa's Knob and, I guess, draw down a signal for distribution in this area. And they, they will pay all the appropriate insurance certificates, and the space they're using is extremely tiny. It's one or two slots in a rack in one of the borrowing closets. And the installation on the roof will be done by Roger Loizell and Vermont Roofing with complete guarantees that the roof will be in perfect condition during the installation and afterwards. And I've agreed to go along with it. So I think it's a good service, and I think we'll get some more, more positive benefits out of it afterwards, too. So I'm pursuing that very short agreement with WWIN. And Bob, I could bring you up here for your financials.
Thank you. I have four items under financial matters tonight for the board's consideration. First item is an information item, the monthly financial statement for February. February is a very good month in terms of cash flow. We received $2.9 million in revenue. So most of that being tax transfers of $2.3 million. The city treasurer was collecting taxes during the month of February, and we transferred a good portion of that revenue that he collected. The other revenues that we do get in February are mostly in federal grants, vocational, overhead support, special ed flow-through monies, and some Perkins monies, $94,000. And again, our lunch program, $40,000 in federal lunch reimbursements. March 1, we did get our final installment of state aid of $965,000. And this week, we sent out the second semester stopper technical bills and the third quarter Rutland High School bill, so we expect in the next couple of weeks to start seeing some revenues and tuitions. On the expense side of the ledger, there are not many changes from the January statement. As I mentioned earlier, we have put a spending freeze on and attempt to maximize our unexpendable balance for June 30. In the contingency update, I'll talk to you about some of the accounts that we are monitoring, that we have some concerns that we may be over-expended in. Other than that, I'll open up for questions the monthly expense ledger and receipts ledger.
No questions?
Yes.
Okay. Oh. Under year-to-date encumbrances, when do you encumber monies?
Salaries are encumbered, most of them, in July. As we get contracts, we encumber all the teachers, all the aides at once. And that also encumbers the FICA portion of that expense. Most of the other expenditures are encumbered through the purchase order process coming from school-based, the secretaries in the schools, key and requisitions, purchase orders come down to the business office, and we encumber them there.
Well, for instance, under health insurance-
Health insurance.
Page five.
Right.
Eight point two one zero zero. Do we not encumber that money until we get a bill for?
Well, yeah, we don't encumber, those are based on monthly premiums. Again, we have a lot of stop turnover, which is kind of hard to determine exactly what the bill is each month. It varies, you know, four or $5,000 depending on a family plan or something like that.
Okay. And my next question is on page six, account number eight point six two two zero, electricity.
Yep.
This is a very hypothetical question, so you can do with it what you will. It says that the, there's still $150,000 left in that account, and we've got four months left in the year.
Right.
So am I wrong in assuming that there might be money left there?
When I get to the contingency update, that'll be one of my items, I think we're going to have a balance. Sorry.
On page five, other professional services.
Right.
Originally, we had budgeted $321,000 on that item. The current budget is $576,000, which is nearly double what we had originally budgeted. And it seems as though we have overspent our original budget by a significant amount. How did we-
That is a factor of the special education funding formula for the tracked kids. We, we make journal entries transferring expenditures into the kids that we are tracking. We're tracking approximately 75 extraordinary kids whose costs go over $13,000. And we make journal entries for salaries and benefits and everything else into the $3,300 account for other professional services to maximize our revenue in that line item. So that is why the original budget is $321,000. The increase is due to the journal entries, so we've made expenditures and budget journal entries to increase those line items so we can get extraordinary reimbursement for those kids.
Will we follow the same budgeting procedures for next year?
Yes, unless the state funding formula changes.
You have for the past several years, Bob.
Yes.
If this school year starts, you swing into a different accounting system to handle that tracking system.
Anything else on the financial statement? Move right along.
Contingency update. The balance as of January 31 was $33,549. I did make one adjustment in January, and that was for increased vocational revenue for the guidance directors and co-op salaries of $2,100. So the current balance in the contingency on your statement was $35,715. The two pending adjustments that we've discussed before, the cost of the traffic control at Rutland High School will cost an additional $10,000. And based on our second semester high school enrollment at Stopper Technical, we will see a savings of $70,000 in that line item under tuition. So right now, I'm projecting, based on those numbers, a $95,000 fund balance as of June 30. As I mentioned, we are monitoring several accounts which may add or decrease those dollars in the contingency. Our substitute account right now is basically expended, so I would expect another $15,000 to $20,000 expenditures in that line item for the rest of this year. Maintenance of buses, we still have dollars left in our budget, but the maintenance department tells me we have some repairs that are in need of being done, so I would expect that to be fully expended, if not a little bit over. Our postage and advertising accounts are, we still have balances in there, but they're getting very close. The athletic revenue for fundraising right now is about a $14,000 shortfall. And I don't know what else could have, I know they have some spring fundraisers planned, but I don't know what else could have sugar off.
Why don't you just pull that out of contingency on the next report, because I don't think we're going to realize it. I think we're going to have at least a $12,000 shortfall probably. I think we ought to identify it early on so that we know where we stand.
I could do that. I'd like to talk to Glenn first to make sure that, you know, what his plans are-
Whatever you, whatever you guys come up with, I think we ought to show a realistic shortfall, because we're going to have to make up that money out of this year's budget.
All right. Another issue comes up. A year ago, we were facing the same predicament, and it was our expectation that we would run an athletic budget that would not possibly come back with another shortfall. I'd like to look at it more cleanly than just assume a shortfall.
If they, if they, I agree with you. If they get down with the budget, fine, but if they can't, and we're going to have to come up with $10,000 or $12,000, then I think we ought to know it early on if they're planning, because $10,000 is a good percentage of what our shortfall is. So we need to know whether we're going to have to spend that money or not.
My point would be with three months left, I'm more interested in-
Getting the $14,000.
Learning how that budget item is going to be balanced as opposed to where we're going to take it out of contingency. I'm concerned to hear that.
Well, let's wait, the administration will discuss that with Glenn and see what we can do in terms of increasing some revenue.
Well, it's still early in the spring sporting season, so there's a lot of expenditures that he has budgeted that may, may not happen, which may lower that, you know, the total number of athletics. On the positive side, even though it has been a cold and dark winter, our oil and electric accounts are very healthy at this point in time, and I would expect a healthy balance to be left in those two accounts. So right now, in the budget process, we have $50,000 budgeted for unexpendable balance. I'm hopeful we can, we can bump that up to maybe a $75,000 number, but at this point, I don't want to put that into our budget planning for next year at this point.
The bus maintenance, why would that note come from the three cent budget?
Well, we tried to run some of the maintenance department, most of it, some are operational, but I might go and save the three cents for the large equipment type purchases, like our new bus, for example, and the maintenance and operation to do it out of our regular budget.
And we've invested approximately $10,000 in our operating budget for bus repair. And, you know, depending on how bad a winter you have, we have lost a couple of transmissions this year, which are quite expensive.
So any other questions on the contingency update?
Not contingency, right about, right at the report. I notice it looks like the lunch program is going to be on the mark.
We're hopeful, I should mention that on the contingency, we're hopeful it might be a little bit above the mark.
Yeah, the breakfast thing, I guess, is going to do real well.
They are doing very well.
Compliment Marriott in their efforts to get that back online.
Any other questions? The third item in your packets was a request for proposal that has been approved by the Board of Ordinance. It's for a purchasing study to be done, both on the city side and the school department. This is an offshoot of the purchasing agent that was proposed to go on the ballot last November, but didn't. And I think this is a compromise to see if, there's other ways that we can save money in joint purchasing with the city of Rutland.
I would recommend that we support that study and participate in it with the understanding that it includes a, the complete computerization system that the school department has in place.
Does this board have to act on the request for proposal?
Wouldn't have to act on the request for proposal, but I would like, I'd like the board to endorse it with that understanding I just mentioned.
What share of this cost are we going to pick at?
Bob, we get 50%.
Fifty percent. When the actual bits come in, we'll see what the costs are.
Vote, bud.
What is the city's budget?
Less than I should.
Sound fair.
What was that addendum that you would want in?
Just an understanding that the study, in terms of the school department, reflects the entire computerized system that we've had in place for many, many years.
Reflects the continued use of it.
Use of it, yes.
All right, not necessarily with the RST, but, but whatever future, just so we don't lose the investment that we have.
That's right.
Okay. Oh, you want to motion to support?
Yes, I would.
I say move. Second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
The last item is a, again, I guess we're asking for action. It's the Stopper Technical Center's 1994, 1995 allowable tuition calculation from the State Department of Education. Due to a couple of circumstances last year, one, a drop in the enrollment from, or the projected enrollment from 265, which we used to set the tuition, to 254 students, and a slightly increase in the expenditures, one due to maternity leave. The allowable tuition, or the tuition that we should have charged, was higher than what we charged. And we do have a policy that has been approved by both the Rutland School Board and the Regional Board that allows us to recoup deficits at the Stopper Technical Center. And the deficit was $75,184. And I've listed out on the, on my memo, the cost to each town to bill to recoup that. And we would so recommend that we bill these towns for the additional tuition for fiscal 94 and 95.
Move. Second.
No question?
Yes.
Rutland owes $21,000 at $296 a per, a student.
Right.
Does that mean we underestimated by 73 the number of students that were going to attend the technical center?
No, no.
It doesn't?
That's how many students we had at the technical center.
Okay.
At last year.
All right. Did we send less to the technical center than we anticipated?
Sharon?
Well, we may have sent a few last, last school year, but that's, it's a whole collective position-
Right, okay.
-that we're looking at.
Well, my concern is that next year, the tuition for the technical center is going to be even higher. And have we been very conservative in estimating the cost?
We've been very, I think we're very right on with the cost. The number of students, you don't know until next September. That's the-
Well, have we been conservative in estimating the number of students that will be at the technical center?
We think so, based upon all experiences of the superintendents and this Stopper Technical Administration and myself. You make the best estimate you can of these factors, and then hope that it works out. And we've done well. Over the years, it's, it's worked out reasonably closely every year.
Because of the number of students there, Madeline, the, the drop of 10 or 15 students makes a major difference in the, in the tuition cost. And to be 10 students or 15 students off, I don't think is being unreasonable, but it makes a difference of almost $300 a student, which, you know, goes one way or the other, either overcharged or undercharged. So, you know, it's very difficult to, we do have the luxury, though, with the vocational center, to be able to recoup any shortfalls for, for tuition. In the past four years, in fiscal 94, we rebated $81,000 back to the descending towns. Well, this is really the first year we're going back out to get an additional, additional billing.
I'm just looking at it as, the tuition this year is 38 times two, what's that? Seventy-
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two thousand, $76,000, or 7,600. And next year, we're only charging 4,900 for a full day. So I just, you know, if there's a, if there's a significant drop and that impacts our budget, that's why I- why I want, how many are we estimating for next year?
230 students.
All day. All day. And right now, we have 251. So, half that number of students, right? But actual bodies is 125. And next year, we're estimating 230.
That amount that we're crediting back into contingency, the $70,000-
Right.
...because of our decreased enrollments in the-
That's for fiscal 96, though. Right.
This, right. At the time when that issue was first raised, about a month or six weeks ago, there was some concern raised about, you know, what happened, you know, how did we misjudge it? And I thought that you were going to be coming back with some information as to what the enrollments were for the morning and what they were for the afternoon and some sort of-
I thought I did with separate information memo attached to the agenda for the last meeting. The answer is that we, that tuition adjustment being made just for Rutland City students. The total population in the high school includes a lot of tuition students from other towns, and some of those students also are part of ours going to the tech school. So, actual enrollment from the tech school was higher than the number we talked about that night. That night, we only talked about Rutland City residents in that tuition factor.
Okay. But does it still stand that somehow we've got 10 students fewer that are going to the technical center than what we had anticipated were going to be, yeah?
Yes.
When I think back four years ago or five years ago, when the school bond was being advertised and promoted, we were promoting it on the basis that we had hoped to see increased usage-
That's right.
-by our students at the technical center. And it sounds like that's not happening, or?
Well, to this day, to this day, it hasn't happened, but there's a lot of, there's other factors involved. And Sharon, would you?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, the figures you're talking about are figures of Rutland High School students enrolled in true technical program. We have Rutland High School students participating in enrichment that don't show up in those true technical program figures. We have Rutland High School students participating in the career path program, all the freshmen. They don't show up in those figures. So, to respond to your question, yes, more Rutland High School students are participating in activity at the technical center.
Okay, but not, but not in our regular programs?
Not in the true, well, not in the true technical program statute requirements. That hasn't increased that greatly, but certainly the number of students in the building. And we have some very flexible arrangements with some Rutland High School students who can't come full-time, who are there on a part-time basis, they don't show up in the stat reports at the state because they're not true technical center students, because they're not there for so many minutes per week, so many blocks. But overall, yes, there's a lot more Rutland High School students participating.
And certainly, at the time the bond was promoted, it was that students who never had an opportunity to have an exposure to the technical center would have that opportunity, and that ninth grade program proves that.
Okay, we need-
Any other questions?
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. New business to come before the board. I would like to request that any board members who are currently assigned to liaison relationships on behalf of the board, if you want in or out of a particular assignment, would you please be in touch with me within the next week so we can print out a new 66, 96, 97 assignments? And I just want to take a head count. The fourth Tuesday in April, April 23, is school vacation week. I just want to make sure there will be a quorum of board members present. Are there any board members who will not be present that week? One, two, three, four, five. Thank you.
Hopefully, you get sick.
Well, we'll take that under advisement between now and the next board meeting. Who was that again? That was Madeline? Madeline, Ted?
I'm coming back that day. You break my heart.
Carrie and Chuck. Okay, thank you.
Harry chaperoning the band trip. We may never see him again. I said Terry was chaperoning the band trip. We may never see him again.
Okay.
Wait until he gets that.
Is there any old business to come before the board?
I have a question on status of the kindergarten in terms of the meetings they've had, and when I prepare to speak to that, can we? Have a next board meeting?
Sure, next board meeting. Any other old business to come before the board? Anything for policies?
You just have a draft that was in your packet which reflects the proceedings at the meeting that was held approximately six weeks ago. This is just a draft and is just intended for feedback. At our meeting, which will be taken up in, during the first part of May, then we will be taking feedback from the various groups and committees that are represented within the athletic council and the proposed activities councils, and look forward to making some revisions in the draft that was presented for first reading.
Anything else to come before the board in open session? If not, the chair would entertain a motion that following a five-minute recess, the board reconvene in the superintendent's office for an executive session to discuss contractual matters, the premature release of information regarding those subjects which place this board at a substantial disadvantage in the opinion of the chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The board will adjourn to the superintendent's table.